All right. All right, everyone ready? All right, I'd like to call this Monday, April 3rd, 2023 Public Budget Hearing to Order. Mrs. Yell, will you call the roll, please?
Mary Ann.
I'm here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Bruce Manning.
Here.
Steve Hall.
Here.
Breanna Higgins.
Here.
Ulyan Walker.
President.
Ryan Callahan.
Here.
All right, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll turn it right over to Superintendent Gallagher.
Thank you all very much.
Just say B7, just give us a little bit of bingo thing.
B7.
Great.
B7, next number? Yes, we did the senior class fundraiser. The Honorable Mayor was also in attendance, calling out numbers. That was Friday night. We had a great time. Raised a lot of money for the senior class. And I know I have a retirement gig now, so. All right. So, thanks for throwing me off, Bruce. Appreciate that. All right. Once again, I just want to thank our team and everyone who's been working hard on the budget, from central office to building principals and budget holders, you know, Steve Burcom. So we're, I think, in a comfortable place to present our overall budget. We obviously, after tonight and tonight's input from school committee, we have some more opportunities to revise for the final budget presentation on April 25th. So our FY '24 budget update, as you recall, the preliminary budget has been presented. And the items in the request in blue, that's obviously, we've discussed this, but that's being funded through savings, grants, and other, such as school choice and other funding sources within the schools. So these are the ones that are in the budget, and you'll see those in your budget book as we go through the entire budget. So math curriculum, resources, specialized program administrator, after-school program development, NEAS, global citizenship, place-based education program at the NOC, curriculum resources with our world language, middle school athletics. So grade four, we have out, but that's one we put on a priority list, because as we were saying, we need to continue to watch the numbers at the Breznerhand School. And then also, the math interventionist is also on a priority list as we work with Lisa Eppolito and our curriculum teams, and also our teaching staff, you know, to look at, can we do interventions in a different way? So those are kind of on a priority list. Oop. And then the grade four language-based teacher. The ones that are left, let me just go through this again for everybody. The ones that are left right now are in the city allocations. So, there you go. So the assistant groundskeeper, the tech integrator, the .2 increase with the music teacher, the one BCBA that we're going to split between the NOC and the Mullen right now, and then the last is the grade four language-based teacher, four or five. So that's in the city allocations at this time. So our budget book overview, kind of just want to give a summary as we go through our numbers. So to support the district goals and really looking at agile approaches to technology in our new technology department, what Mr. Little Hale has done along with our leadership team, is we really moved all of the tech purchases under Technology Center. So you'll see that when you see moves and reductions, it's really under a new technology department. And we're excited about that, and Ms. Furlong and our team kind of overseeing a lot of the technology within the district. The second piece is building maintenance and operations. As you know, with inflation, the costs, with utility costs, you'll see increases in a lot of that throughout the budget book in those areas. So we kind of highlighted those for everybody. The other piece, as we know, Mr. Little Hale has been really working hard in reclassifying and putting appropriate personnel and salaries in the right line items. So you'll see in special education, a lot of the reclassification. So you may see increases in salaries, but it's just really moving the right people in the right line item. For example, our RBTs, Registered Behavioral Technicians, Certified Occupational Therapy Assistance, our coders, they were lumped into like the IA salary line item, and Mr. Little Hale pulled those out of there. Our new investments have been noted, so some of those positions I just talked about, when we go through the budget book, you can see where those show up. And then the budget book reflects planned expenses of the district. So through feedback from school community members before our presentation tonight, some great questions, and we kind of revamped, I mean, pretty much it's still the same, but I kind of want to just highlight what you're going to be seeing. So throughout our budget process, the budget development FY '22, you all have seen the city Medicaid, Choice, Circuit Breaker, entitlement grants revolving ESER 2 and ESER 3. In the budget book, we really tried to break those down for you just a little bit more. So for example, you still will see the city Medicaid, Choice, and Circuit Breaker, and that's highlighted here on that piece that we gave you tonight. And what we wanted to do is really highlight a couple of our big entitlement grants. So we've had in previous budgets, entitlement grant $700,000. But if you look over here, the entitlement grants through special education is our ABLE Grant, which is $500,000. Entitled I grants are $200,000. We typically, those entitlement grants are more predictable as you budget going into the following year, so that's kind of why we highlighted those. As you know, those can change, especially over the summer, but we anticipate those won't change, so we incorporated those in there. And then we've always been talking about revolving accounts. That totals around $900,000 right here. So what we did here for everybody is kind of break those revolving accounts into curriculum staff development, and that's the Swayze Foundation, so that's outside of the operational budget. Our preschool fee, athletic fees, transportation, and building maintenance fee. And then the last pieces we've been talking about are the ESER grants, and then those are down here on the bottom, too. So we kind of broke those out for you. As we know, ESER 2, the spending is no longer after this year, and then we start looking at ESER 3 grant funds. So hopefully, that's more specific, and that's maybe some of the questions of where do those kind of come from? So what we've really tried to do in the budget book is to really break those down so you all have a better understanding where that funding's coming from. The budget book review, and what we'll do at the end of the budget book review, we did have some requests on the grants, so I have a slide in at the end that we can review all of the grants within the district. All right. I think we're up, Mr. Little Hale. Do you want to come up here? We don't. No, we don't want you shouting from there. What I'll do, Mr. Little Hale, why don't I stay here, and then you can open up your computer where I sit.
I'll move the bingo cards out of the way.
Yeah, there you go. That way. So hopefully, that overview kind of explains just some of the, you know, minor modifications that we made, and just trying to really explain the different light items down, down the road. All right. I don't think, we don't have this up, do we? The budget book is just going to review, right? Yeah. Posted it, yeah. So it should be either on your computer screen. We also gave everyone a hard copy. That might be easier for people to review. So let me just grab my. All right, that same, as you open up that first summary sheet, it's very similar to kind of the information that I just talked about. So right now, the city appropriation is a 5.3%, and then overall, with the grants, those other resources, funding resources, the overall budget at this time is 7.1 total. And then use of funds by cost center is, gives you just an overview in the budget book, and then salary and expenses. And then from there, I'm not sure how you want to proceed. If you want me to go through each school, and if there's questions after each school, we can pause after that, okay? All right. So the Breznerhand on page two of 34, well, how we titled the technology removal from the building, we, it's IT expenses moved to central office IT. So wherever you see that, highlight in the notes, that's the new technology department, and that, those items fall under Ms. Furlong. As you can see, under Breznerhand, what we just talked about, you have the additional special education teacher, the IDC program, will assist with developing our programs that we've been talking about, keeping students in district. The next page, on page three of 34, you can see some corrections. So there was a question on, there was a simple line correction there. So really, the salary should have been showing a grade three salary, but it showed a grade one. So as Phil would say, that's, the salary hasn't changed or anything, it's just a geographical error, correct?
It's a geography issue, or if you want to be less kind, it's a mistake on my part.
We don't, yeah, yeah. We'll stay kind to Phil for this presentation, it's the next one. So as you continue to move down on, so all the FTEs, so three of 34, remember, we changed the preschool programming to have it be in a five-day program, if you recall that from last year, so that's where those salaries have increased. Some of the staff are only working as a .8, but now they're full-time. And remember, preschool is tuition paid.
Can I just ask for a clarification? So I think what you just said was, I'm sorry, just going up to that other comment, because I had asked about this. It runs off the page, so I think what you're saying is, the fiscal year '23 correction was that eight teachers were budgeted at the wrong level, salary level, they were budgeted at a grade one level?
At the wrong grade.
Okay.
Wrong grade, same salary.
Okay, so they were just in the wrong line? Literally in the wrong line, so it was a geography issue?
It was a geography issue.
Okay.
It's just, you know, my trying to follow the bouncing ping pong balls.
Got it. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
All right, not a problem. Down below on page three, you can see where we moved that technology to COIT, Central Office. And at the back of the budget book, you can see the new technology department down the road. On page four, Breznerhand, so this is where reclassification and reorganization, so that's exactly what we were talking about, the RBTs and the Certified Occupational Therapists being moved into those salary item, line items. Any questions on that one thus far? Okay? Surely.
The expenses for supplies and materials have almost doubled, conversely, we've been shorting that line for years, so, you know, I'm glad to see that we're catching back up.
Because one of the things that we did is we asked all the budget holders to please go through their personnel lines and let us know what lines they wanted to change. And so, change that you see in the flight report they've requested.
Great.
I do have a question, if you have one. Are the additional assets were cut out of the current budget? Are those in, do we see those in here? Have you figured out how you're funding these other items?
Yeah, so the, are you saying the ones like for the health teacher, for example?
The rest are crossed out, yeah, so like for the BREZ, there were a bunch that we said we would fund through other.
Correct. So like, for example, like the health teacher, instead of hiring a new teacher, we're reallocating those resources as part of the phys ed program, phys ed and wellness program.
Okay, so we won't necessarily see those called out?
Correct. Yeah, we didn't put any of those in.
Okay.
So those are out at this time, and the same with the grade four and the math interventionists, they're not in this budget, but they're kind of on a priority, like, kind of looking at that. So for our next meeting, I'll have a better explanation of what we're going to do. Like, what will the math intervention look like at the BREZ? And then, as I said, the other one is numbers right now. Right now, we can, just, you know, that's a wash at grade four, but we really need to watch the numbers at the Breznerhand.
I have a question.
Surely.
The instructional materials, that went down by $25,000.
Yeah.
And there's somewhere else where the math curriculum has gone up?
Yes, so.
Is it just moving line items?
So this one, this $25,000, that's the AV line, so that was the technology line that got moved over to the technology department.
There are two, if I can interrupt.
Yes.
There are two budget errors that need to be retired because they're so outdated these days, one of which is AV, and the other one is the infamous but long revered data processing, because we've moved all the data processing of the IT as well.
Right, okay. All right, page five, as you can see down, you can see the cost increases. That's where you're going to see utilities. We anticipated $200,000 to $250,000 increase on our utilities and costs, so that's where those are starting to show up. Page six, once again, just the cost increases there.
Stop people one second. I just wanted to go back to page five. I think I have the same question at a few of the schools, if you could talk about it. It has a math intervention line, but no literacy intervention line, or reading teachers called out at the Breznerhand, so I'm wondering where those positions are.
Those are going to be in the professional salaries?
Under which?
I think those, Phil, those are just put into the.
It's Title I.
Title I, correct.
Literacy gets rolled into Title I.
What?
So it's out of the district. Now, you're going to ask me where, which line it's in.
Which page, do you know?
Yeah. Yeah, page five, it's called literacy math, it really should speak of literacy. It's right above the math intervention line.
Right, so that's, literacy math is actually only for math?
No, it's actually.
I mean, sorry, only for literacy?
So that should say literacy intervention?
It should say, yeah.
Okay.
Again, it's one of those things we've been carrying, it's part of the cleanup as we go, excuse me, go forward.
Okay, so just so I'm understanding that, literacy intervention, there's about four positions, and math intervention is three positions?
Yes, yeah. All right. Page six. I think that does it for the BREZ.
A question from page two for Breznerhand, there's a pretty significant drop for school admin, was that a reorganization of positions?
Correct. That's that, that's going to show up at the high school, that's that program administrator.
So there's someone who's more at the district level, instead of having someone at the building level, is that?
No.
No.
So that's, that's the, that was a preschool director's position.
Okay.
That's going up to the high school.
So the preschool director's position has been eliminated?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to know what was removed there. Thank you.
Yes.
On page six, just noticing this, they're not big increases, but they are from the prior year, the supplies and printing, is it, we just didn't have budget line items for supplies and printing at the admin level, at the, for the school administration? So that's page six, like the printing and supplies both went up.
Yeah, I mean, those, some of those were the lines that got slashed during first round of ESER, so we put some stuff in ESER and bring it back.
Oh, got it.
And again, the increases here are based on what the schools said that they need for those lines.
Yeah.
They know the spending far better than I do, that's for sure.
Great, thank you. Any more questions on Breznerhand?
All right.
All right.
Okay, overall summary by program at the Mullen. Once again, you can see IT is moved to central office IT department, that .5 BCBA, remember they're splitting that, the Mullen and the NOC, so that's that one staff that you saw earlier on the budget asks. Page eight.
Sorry, excuse me. Just the same question on this page, the Mullen, I don't see any literacy or reading on this page.
I'm trying to see. Let me see.
It is at the NOC in the high school, just, you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Question won't keep coming.
I'm, no, 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 I'm wondering if the, oh, the literacy is being, shit, I have Lisa Marie out there. Is that, should that be? Oh.
Oh.
So literacy at the Mullen, it's not, there's not a line item here, but is that literacy rolled into the NOC? Like the reading teacher and all of that? They're both what? Okay, so there is, for the Mullen, there is a literacy and math intervention, and it's under the salaries.
There's a math intervention line.
There's just, that's the new one, right?
So where would, where would the reading interventionist be at least, maybe?
I believe, I think.
It might. The other piece, too, it could be, it could be in the, because that staff member's been there for a long time, it could be under special education. That's where I think it's popping up, but I think for our next meeting, we can show you where that shows up.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we definitely have literacy at the intervention at the Mullen, yes. Any other questions on that, on this page? Awesome. All right, page eight. So as you see on the right side, we have the line correction for that is, so we budgeted for a math interventionist, and we had a veteran teacher kind of go and take that role, and that's why you'll see a shift of some of the salary costs in that. So then what we ended up doing is hiring a fifth-grade teacher at a lower salary. So we budgeted, you see how that works? We budgeted like $67,000 for math interventionist. One of our veteran teachers moved into that role, and then we hired a new elementary teacher. So that's where you see the shifts there, the line adjustments. Going through, down on the right, you'll see the cost increases that we talked about. Our technology being pulled out of the Mullen has got moved to COIT, and then that's the same for the, down the bottom is your reclassification under special education in those positions, BCBA's, language-based teacher, coders, and RBTs. All right. And if there's something like after tonight that, you know, you missed, or you, you know, you can obviously email me, and then we'll make sure we address it for the public, the final budget, too. All right, Edward Mullen School continued, nine of 34. So once again, the cost increases that you see, the line correction for the math interventionist is what I kind of just explained, and then the cost increases for the operational plant. Okay. Page 10 of Mullen, it's just that last page, and once again, the cost increases, supplies, things like that. All right. Next. Our summary by program for the NOC, very similar of what you've seen before, so the IT getting moved over to the COIT, that added position, remember .5 BCBA at Mullen, .5 at the NOC, so they're going to share that position. And then the place-based education, we've rolled that into the curriculum. And then down under the, where we at, operation plant is just the increase in the overall. As we go into the more of a detail of the NOC Middle School, on page 12, on the right, you can see the technology got moved. If you all recall, that was $11,000 for Voces World Language Curriculum, that's where that shows up. And then on the next page, on 13, is where you'll see the place-based education, increase of the $49,000, and then up top, the reclassification, reorganization of the BCBA's, the 504s, coordinators, RBTs, and coders. All right. Page 14, this is how my skills-based instruction class goes. Just kidding. Page 14, you can see once again, the cost increases, custodial supplies, all of that is appearing on this page, a large portion of it, maintenance and plant.
Superintendent?
Yes.
So I noticed a new line item for middle school sports.
Yeah, so part of our FINCOM discussions, the, there's a user fee being paid for, for middle school sports, and part of our FINCOM discussion way back was, is there a way that we can eliminate those user fees for the middle school? And being, it was around $21,000, $22,000, we felt like we could do that. We felt like we could do that. So that's where that shows up, where we eliminated those user fees for next year for the middle school sports.
Thank you. I was hoping that's what that was.
Yes, yes.
I was going to ask.
I'm sorry, I, that's a victory. I'm sorry, I skipped over that.
Yeah, thanks.
I don't want to skip over the victories. But we're excited about that. And I know through Ms. Walker, Mr. Callahan, we've been having a lot of discussions, Ms. Hall regarding user fees overall. So maybe that's, that was a small user fee expense that we felt we could absorb in the operational budget for the families. Page fourteen, right? We've already discussed that one. And page fifteen is the last page. And there's really not, not much on that one. All right. Newburyport High School. Mr. Wolf's out there, he's getting nervous. I might have took something out. It's all still there, Mr. Wolf. The, as we go over summary by program. So this is where the tech director, oh, it's not director, tech integrator is, shows up here. We added, if you scroll down a little bit, the point two music teacher shows up here. The specialized program administrator, that's being reallocated from the Bresnahan. Our after-school alternative program. So that's the thirty-eight thousand dollars that shows up there. The global citizenship program. The reclassification of admin assistant position. And then the, down below is NEAS accreditation. Yes.
Can you detail the music teacher addition and the after-school alternative program, what that is?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the music teacher, as we are enhancing our music program, and that's been one of our goals. So it would be, right now, one of our music teachers is a point eight. So we would increase him to a full-time teacher, which then he'd be able to pick up more classes of music. So that's where that comes in to make that teacher a full FTE. And then the after-school program kind of really ties, there's two things it ties to. The first one is kind of learning loss and kind of targeting some of our struggling students. So that was during the pandemic. But what we really found out is tied to our therapeutic program. It gives another opportunity for students who might not be successful in a regular school setting to have their academics after school. So for some of our students, it's really kind of thinking outside the box a little bit. Where we have some students that might have the ability to work or maybe get counseling during the day. And then they have a small class after school where they get their academics. So that's, that's what that is. Right now, I think we have about six students. We would be looking, be like a credit recovery and just also really just providing an opportunity for students that need a little bit more support. That, you know, could be school phobic, anxiety type of student that may drop out, you know, things like that. So it's kind of, the program is designed where we have teachers, special education support, along with the therapeutic piece too. So it just ties into our in-district programming, so.
Thanks.
All right. On page seventeen. So if you look on the right, the, you see the seal by literacy, that pops up over there. That's just a increase because we're having more students who are now becoming certified in Du Language. So we need a little bit more support there. Cost increase. We purchased new biology, AP Biology textbook. And all the notes are there, I don't have to read them to you. But that's where, down below is where the tech integrator shows up. And then once again, moved a lot of that technology over to Lisa Furlong's IT department. Yes.
Is the, is the textbook a hard copy textbook or is it, is it an online?
I think it's a little of both. So there is some consumable materials that they have, but it's also has online resource too. AP's a little bit different in the sense that, you know, as, because it's a national curriculum, you don't have as much flexibility of the different types of books that you can buy. So the, the virtual frog might not be part of the AP curriculum yet. So, that's a joke. All right. Next, page eighteen. So that's where you see under salaries, professional salaries, you see the point eight to a full-time teacher. Reclassification once again of all of these positions. And then the after-school alternative program. Page nineteen. That's where you'll see the global citizenship line item pop up, reclassification. So this is another reclassification where the trainer wasn't properly, right, Phil? She was in a different line item and you, you moved her into.
Just moved her to a more appropriate line item.
Yeah, into athletics. And that's where, and the same for the athletics administrative assistant.
In that case, all of the administrative assistants at the high school have been previously budgeted under school administration. So we took out the, the administrative assistant for athletics and actually moved that to the athletics budget.
All right. Page twenty. Down the bottom, you just see the operation plant increases for next year. And page twenty-one. This is the cost increase from the plant. Then you go down to the reclassification of athletic administrative assistant. And then you see the NEAS piece pop up there.
Are we still on page twenty, are we on page twenty?
Twenty-one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had a question on page twenty. Under athletics, there's a fundraiser line item as an expense?
We're gonna, we're gonna get to that on the, the last piece, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was a great question you had, so.
All right, super.
We, we have an explanation for that.
Okay.
We save that for the finale at the end.
Very satisfying.
I can't wait.
All right, twenty-one. I think we're all set. All right. Twenty-two. So here's system-wide.
Actually, Superintendent, can I ask, go back with just that, just, I think just for people's awareness. Did you just talk about the virtual high school line item and what, what that entails?
Yeah, so part of many, many schools is virtual high school that you subscribe to. So for example, if there's an elective that a student's interested in, but you don't have enough high school students to subscribe, they can take the course on virtual high school. So where there's an instructor. And it just gives another opportunity for students to explore different career paths. You know, if you have, if it was like marine biology or something like that, that we were not offering, it gives the high school students another opportunity. So that's where that comes in. All right. System-wide. You can see the increases to technology. Personnel expenses to CO, that's under special education. You see where the math curriculum is here. Reclassification, reclassified position to teacher under English as a second language. And then this is where your added assistant groundskeeper is. And then as we go through, you'll see these a little bit more detail. Under system-wide, page twenty-three. This is where we've been talking about the increase of out-of-place costs, tuitions and placement. So that's where you see that OSD, the fourteen percent increase to special education. We did have a, just last Friday, we did have a very positive meeting with legislators and senators, the superintendents. Had an opportunity to present some of the concerns with the budgeting around special education, transportation. I have that PowerPoint that I just got today. So I think it's part of my memo that I send out to you all. You can see how hard the North Shore superintendents are really working, are really, really trying to articulate the costs of rising with transportation and special education, so. Just thought of that. So we're not alone with some of this, some of these issues. On page twenty-four. As you see, the reallocated, the increase of the math curriculum. That's the math curriculum we're piloting right now. And we anticipate, you know, the cost from last, you know, to go up, I think it was thirty-five thousand for next year on whatever curriculum we decide. On page twenty-five.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Under safety on page twenty-four, I know it's not changed since twenty-two, but crossing guard is sixty-five thousand for salary, that's more than one crossing guard, right?
Yeah, that's total.
And we kept, keep losing them.
Yes, we have.
So that number stays the same.
The line has stayed flat because we can't get enough of them. So we haven't been spending that line completely.
Okay.
Right.
What, what is this uniform for fifteen hundred dollars? Cause it's a safety vest.
I'm assuming it's a safety vest.
It's a very nice vest.
More than one.
No, I think.
If it's a thousand of them.
Well, think about these people standing out in the weather all year long.
Okay, that's fine. But if they're wearing a safety vest, I know that four of them don't cost fifteen hundred dollars.
I don't think it's just a safety vest.
No, I think it's.
It's weather gear.
Okay, but it doesn't say that. Right?
Coats.
All uniforms.
So you, so we supply their jackets and all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay. So.
For their twenty dollars a day.
I'll wait till FinCom, but I want to see the breakdown of those uniforms.
That would be one.
You're really going to chase these crossing guards away.
The math doesn't add up?
We can, we can do it. We'll show you the breakdown of that. Yes. Crossing guards are very hard, hard to find, so, as we know. But yes, for that fifteen hundred dollars, we can break down what that uniform tells. Yes.
Part of my business is making things like that, so I know what they actually cost. That's why I'm questioning the cost.
Can you get us a deal?
Probably not ethically, but sure.
Can't do that. You don't have to visit the membership committee.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Transportation line item, why has that gone down so significantly?
You get down it? Yes.
Historically, at least I've seen the last couple of years, we had been over budgeting that line for general transportation. We also had a big number in ESSR three for this year for transportation that we've also removed because if Sean and I get into a little more detail, ESSR three is sort of a work in progress. And so realize that we're not going to need that much for transportation, so that was removed out of it. But do want to keep people aware that, as I've said before, next year is the last year of our current bus contract. And I'm anticipating that we're going to see significant increases starting in fiscal year twenty-five.
I just have one more question.
Yes.
The school lunch I know is free, which is great. Is there any indication that they may stop that? I know the state just did it for this year, but has anybody heard anything about, I know you can't predict the future, but is it going to be a continual thing or all of a sudden, one day, they're going to say lunch costs?
As of right now, I believe for fiscal year twenty-four, it's not in the budget. But I thought, and perhaps America can correct me, that it was going to be part of a supplemental budget, but I'm not sure.
The governor's supplemental?
It's going to get us through, it's, we're going to get through fiscal year twenty-three in terms that the students aren't paying anything upfront. As of right now, it will go back to the way it's always been.
I, I think it's in the governor's proposed budget. I think it was in the governor's proposed budget.
I can't remember which way it was going.
You're right. To cover the cost.
To continue it, but I don't know if that, you know, will end up at the end, but I think the governor proposed it.
Well, that's right. Yeah, so I think eventually if it does, we might, as Phil said, go back to the, you know, student purchasing. But right now.
We're not anticipating that, right?
We're not, it all depends.
I'd like to see the discussion where they want to cut the school lunch subsidy. That should be a live fire.
Bring back ketchup as vegetable.
All right. Page twenty-four. We just covered that one. Page twenty-five. Once again, plant, maintenance plant, you see where the cost increases. You see where the assistant groundskeeper is at the bottom of that page. And, yeah, equipment adjustments. Page twenty-six. There's not much on this one. Adjust salary increase for past three years. That's FICA and unemployment and, right? Phil, that's all.
We had not been adjusting the budget for the last couple of years, the increase in the base salaries of folks in terms of the Medicare number. So needed to do a catch-up on that.
Under, sorry. Under school committee memberships, is that the cost of MASC membership?
Yes, that's, I think for all of, for everybody, correct.
We, we did cut the school committee salaries, right? Oh, don't, sorry.
Will we get paid? I would volunteer to get rid of that.
No. I'll argue that one.
It's a tax liability.
I'll argue it.
All right. Page twenty-seven. Not much. All right. Special education. Page twenty-eight. So as you can see, changing, so we've obviously reallocated staff, but change in program structures. You know, just scrolling all the way down. This is where the increase out of district placements, the fourteen percent, that obviously we have to budget for. We are, hopefully, we'll have some relief down the road. But right now, we got to make sure that we cover those costs.
Can I just interrupt for one moment?
Yes.
And, and again, as we started with last year, this just pulls together all the special education lines from the different schools into one report. So everything you see here, you've already seen in the individual schools.
I always want to, I think part of the work Phil's trying to do is to put everything under, right, the right heading, so it's just easier to follow.
Trying to get the rollups to work, because special education includes psychologists, preschool, reading and a couple of other things in terms of the overall head. It comes back to looking at our chart of accounts and trying to see what changes we can make to that as we look towards upgrading munis as of July first.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm a page behind.
Okay.
Page twenty-seven. Why are, why is there another line item here for transportation?
There's regular transportation, special ed transportation.
Okay, how would we know this was special ed transportation or what is this? One eighty thousand?
Which one are you looking at, page?
Page twenty-seven.
That's regular transportation.
Okay, so the other one we're looking at.
Special ed or page twenty-eight.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so that.
Again, that's one of those things that perhaps going down the road, we might want to build a little schedule in terms of just transportation costs.
Okay, but yeah, but that helps. Cause I, when I looked at it on page twenty-four, it looked like it was at the same level as the other transportation expenses. So I couldn't tell that that was just special ed.
Cause we also have athletic transportation as well.
That looks, it doesn't look like it's under, anyway. You might want to double check that, Phil. Twenty-four looks like it's the same level as the other, the other items. Doesn't look like it's, it doesn't look like a category under, under special ed.
The next version.
Okay. Thank you.
Question on twenty-eight as well.
Yeah.
So reading line, and it's okay if you can't answer this now, we can look into it later. I guess I'm just a little confused on the, where there's a reading teacher, a reading interventionist, a math interventionist versus a regular classroom math teacher. And on this line, reading, are, are all or students eligible to receive reading intervention support that need it? Or only students with disabilities because this is in the special ed category?
I think all students that have, that need the support. So I think it's a little bit different, so. So I think it's a little bit different, so for, as you know, a part of the I E Ps, for people, students that have it on their I E P, so it's going to be part of their grid and is mandated, but we also have reading interventionists that are not on I E Ps. So I think what we'll do is, if I can clarify that for our next meeting.
Yeah.
So you can see which ones, some of them, some of our reading support work with both special education and non-special education.
Okay, I guess I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to clarify what is designated only for special education versus all, and then, you know, if this is the universe of teachers trained for reading support, would a student without an I E P whose performance levels indicate they need reading support, is there enough reading teachers for all students who might qualify, or is it only if they might have room on their caseload, right, like they're traditionally only work with students with disabilities, but if they have room on their caseload, they could bring this kid in, but not all kids who actually need it, there's, there's enough capacity?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. So I think we, I can clarify that, because I know, like, through our Title One, there's a lot of reading intervention, not just for students on, with disabilities. The whole idea, as you know, is to try to provide the supports ahead of time, before there's a disability diagnosis, so.
Ms. Ippolito, did you want to say something? If so, we would like you to come up to the mic. Do you?
Sure. No, you can. I mean, if you have the answer, sure, but.
If you don't, stay seated.
Come on up and make one up.
Thank you.
So for the reading specialists, so there's some confusion with the names. So we have Title One teachers at the Brezner Hand School who function in the role of reading specialists, and they service students who are general ed students, and the students that they service are chosen through teacher observations and reporting back through the DIBL testing that we do, as well as historical data on their reading abilities, but like I had presented before, they don't stay just in Title One or needing reading support. We use data.
And they rotate.
Data-driven, and we inform the parents and that sort of thing. When you get to the Mullen, and I'm not, I can't address, like, line items in the budget, is that, is it my purview, and I don't pretend to know where all these things are here? Actually, let me go back to Title One teachers. So I believe it's two point five, Title One teachers are funded through Title One, and then the others are funded through the budget, but again, Phil can answer that.
The operating budget.
Yeah, can address that clearly. I believe the little bit of confusion was at the Mullen, there were two reading specialists, but then it was discovered that we don't need two reading specialists, I think, last year, and so that, those two roles were split, and a math interventionist was created through S R two, and so I think that is why it's a separate line item, because the real literacy interventionists were rolled into a different line item. So I think that that is something that, you know, like Superintendent and Phil will clear up. But we do have all those roles, everyone's getting what they need, and then separately, we have, working with Mr. Pierce, we have several of our teachers who have been trained in Orton Gillingham and continue to be trained in Orton Gillingham, and they are, like, special education teachers, and so they're addressing the needs of, at a tier-three level of students who require those reading services. Now, we're also looking to train some of our Title One reading interventionists who will do tier-two Orton Gillingham intervention.
Thank you so much.
While that fits together.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we can also, I think, you know, even for the, our next meeting, to, you know, pull that out a little bit, so you can see how much support's going to perform. That would be great. All right.
Can I, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So we, we're now in the special education item.
Correct.
Is this repeating what's, this is, this is in addition to what's in each of the school budgets, right?
No, this is, this is.
This is just summarizing it differently.
Regional One schedule, all of the special ed.
Correct.
Okay, got it, and, and system-wide, similarly.
Yes, everything is there.
Got it, so we're not seeing, like, additional items.
No, there's nothing in there that you haven't already seen.
You're just presenting them in different, different ways.
And now we have it. Yeah. So we, so one, so as we go back, you know, even for the general public, if they, instead of trying to go through.
Yeah.
All of the schools to try to figure out specialized costs, you have one page here, and the same for I T. So when we get to the I T, you can see where all of those were pulled out of the operational budget into its own, you know, department. All right. Page twenty-nine. Covered most of that, I think, already. Page thirty, this is under technology. And that's where a lot of the, all the I T that we talked about is showing up, and the same throughout all the presentation, your curriculum instruction and assessment, has one page here for everybody, one department. Building and grounds, that's Steve Berkholm's department, showing up on one page, yep.
I just, this is a sort of a clarifying question. Briefly discussed it when we were sitting here, but the after-school and summer program, it was kind of like, trying to follow, it was like, where's Waldo, because it would disappear here and reappear here, and if you could just sort of give a quick overarching explanation of that program and how it then fits.
The summer program?
Summer, yeah.
So part of, and we're utilizing S R funding for that, it's part of S R two and S R three, is to provide the ongoing summer support. So our summer program is offered for the elementary students, really with a literacy focus, and also, we also have other summer programs for STEM, our L program. So we, part of the summer programming is really just providing student supports throughout the summer months. And for us, it was really funded through S R two, it'll be funded through S R three, and then as we plan for the future, we'll see if we want to continue, which we've received a lot of positive feedback for, because even before the pandemic, there was always that summer learning loss that, so it would probably be something that we would want to continue in the operational budget. The after-school program at the high school was stemming from the whole idea, as I said, of developing in-district programming, and it just gives another alternative for students that aren't being successful in the regular school day, where they're coming after school for specialized instruction, and then during, you know, the daytime is when, you know, Mr. Smith is working with college career stuff, so, you know, having the students work and then getting their academic.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll put in my regular pitch for a, a summer program that does enrichment as well.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, that's, I mean, that's part of that, so not only just for the learning loss, but remember last year, we piloted the summer advanced academy for that continuation, yeah, and Dr. Abrams spearheaded that over the summer, so we're going to continue to do that, and that's also through S R funding. All right. So you're building in grounds. And then this last piece, so once again, I think with Mr. Little Hale trying to, you know, pull things together, so falling under athletics, you have the athletic budget, and so one of the questions is, you know, what's the cost, the overall cost of running athletics, and you can see the overall cost is eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so to speak. So the user fees, that are, we collect roughly around three hundred thousand dollars in user fees, that would offset that eight, you know, so you're probably looking at how to run the full sports program, together would be five hundred thousand dollars. So there's, that number is in there, and then the, the question we got was this fundraiser fund, and. Yeah, well, we, we worked on this one today, and I think Phil has a, a quick explanation for that one. He had to do some digging.
It's a vestige of the way we used to account for our revolving accounts. When I got here, I was kind of surprised when I realized that in our version of Munis, we didn't have any revenue accounts, so we were booking revenue and expenses into the same line. In fact, the first time I pulled the food service report, I had one line show up and it had a number of four thousand dollars, and I went to the staff, said, well, where are the revenues, where are the expenses? It was all in the one line. So digging into this, that twenty-three thousand is neither an expense nor a revenue, it's going to come out, it's actually the historic fund balance of fundraising from the past.
Okay.
So it's just a, a vestige of the way we accounted for it, and so it's one of those things that I got to clean up out of Munis.
Okay, so it'll eventually go away?
It's going to go away, so I'm going to take it out.
Okay.
Because it's neither expense nor a revenue.
Okay.
And I apologize for the confusion on that. Some of these accounts still need to be retitled as well.
There is twenty-three thousand dollars sitting.
Yeah, it's in the revolving account, absolutely.
Revolving.
I have a question. Are you done?
I'll have another question, but go ahead and follow up with that.
Can you just clarify the two different line items for stipends coaching? The first one's a hundred and twelve, and then the one further down is thirty-eight across multiple years?
Okay, so where are we? All right, so the stipend coaching's up the, the upper part, our stipends pay to existing employees, and then the stipends below, which are under the expense line, are for coaches and other staff who are not employees of the district. It, it was.
So the, the bottom one is the parents, and the top one is the math teacher who's also coaching?
Yeah. It was one of the things that drove me a little crazy as well, trying to figure it out.
Thank you.
So my question is, is not really a question, it's more just a point, that our, our actual cost to offer athletic programming in the city of Newburyport to our students is eight hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the expectation is that anyone who wants to participate will have to pay a fee to participate, and I think that's a really important point for everyone to keep in mind. I'm not proposing eliminating those fees, but I really think it's important that we understand that we are offering quite a remarkable program, but we aren't, aren't not fully funding it, and we are assuming that we're either going to provide scholarships to folks who need it, but those people will need to come forward and ask for that money, and, and we're, or we're assuming that families are going to put their money towards participation in these sports programs, and I think it's an assumption that we, we as a, as a committee and as a city need to continually revisit and make sure that's the, the approach we want to take, because it's not just athletics, it filters to other things, and, and we can talk more about the other things, but it's theater, music, there's a lot of extras asked of our families, and I think if we want to really provide a program that excels, we should provide it, we should fully fund these things, and I know this is not a, a new thing I'm saying, I know we've talked about this before, but I think it's really important for us to, to understand that, to offer the, the kind of program we're offering, we're relying on families to, to support it, and it's not just by user fees, they also do a significant amount of fundraising, and, you know, it's just, it's just something that I, I want us to continue to have conversations about.
That's going to be on the next FinCom.
Again?
Next week? Yep, forever. I love talking about it for five years.
Come on down.
Thank you.
All right, and then before I wrap up, that's the budget book, but I also wanted to show, and as part of your, is another great question from school committees, to show the grants overview, and one of the questions that we received is how many hours from start to finish? So we, I think we have to do a little more work on that, but I would say just to apply is in the right-hand column, and then here are all the grants that we, you know, some of them you're familiar with, because we report out on them, like your S R's you're familiar with, entitlement grants you're familiar with, Title One, two A, Title Four, Math Acceleration Grant is a competitive grant that we've gotten for the past couple of years, Accelerated Math Instruction is a competitive grant, the Afghan Refugee Support is a competitive grant, the Student Opportunities Act is a competitive grant, which we found out we, we were denied that grant, I D A and two forty and two sixty-two, those are entitlement around special education, American Rescue Plan for homeless, and those were grants that we've had in twenty-two, but they're not here for this year, the Comprehensive Health School Grant you're familiar with, MYCAP is a small grant, but that's going to tie into the Pathways Grant that we're working on at this point, School Lunch Equipment Grant, Stop the Violence School Program Grant that we were awarded, one of the few districts who are proud of that, twenty-six thousand dollars. We have a Safer School and Communities Grant that is in the mix, Innovative History Grant, which are competitive arts and cultural competitive grant, Circuit Breaker, you know that's reimbursement, and then E-Rate reimbursement. So all of those competitive grants, you know, the central office theme, but as you know, Ms. Ippolito really pursues those and writes those, and so we just, just the application, we kind of estimated, but I think it was a great question by Ms. Walker, and for us, I think as we move forward with these grants, is to kind of estimate, I think, as we're going through them, how many hours that those grants are utilizing. So like, for example, if we receive the Innovative History Grant, if we receive that, we're implementing history curriculum, and then there's going to be checks and balances and benchmarks that our teachers and administrators are going to have to write, look at assessment data submitted to the state. So when you ask that question, there's probably hundreds of hours that go through the school year of the reporting of some of these grants, so, because the idea is, oh, the grants, you know, are free, but when you look at the hours, the man-hours that have to go in to applying for them, accepting them, implementing them, and reporting out, it's, it's not free. It's, I think it's a lot of hard work, and, and those competitive grants are voluntary, so we don't have to apply for those, but I have a great team out there that is always looking to enhance the school system, so.
Are those, are those hours of monitoring and then reporting out included in the twenty, or are you missing a column?
No, we, we, we have, we felt comfortable, like, estimating the application process, how many hours it would take just to apply, but I think for us, it's really to kind of follow through the entire grant and record those hours, so we have better data in saying, like, this grant, you know, was, throughout the school year, was a hundred hours of personnel time.
Yeah, really good to have that.
I think that, I think that was a great suggestion.
It's, for me, it's sort of in the same category of capturing the money that the P T O spends to bring cultural arts into our schools, because that doesn't appear in our budget, but it is a service provided as a result of the effort of the P T Os, so it would be great to capture that information, and whether it's a part of the budget process or just a general report out, I think it's something that the community should hear about.
All right, yes.
Two questions on grants, starting with the Afghan Refugee Support, is that a multi-year grant, is that one, will that be offered again?
I think, is that, at least, Marie, is it one year? It's one year. So we would have to reapply, correct, if there's funding there?
Is, so are you, I mean, I know you can't see the future on if that will be offered again, but are you anticipating needing to roll the services from that hundred and twenty-eight thousand into the operating budget?
It could, I mean, it could be, it would be something, you know, going into next year, take a look at. A lot of it's supportive of the students and the families. I think we've done a great job within our operational budget that we have right now of creating the foundation for those students to be successful. I'm going to report out on the I F T A that we had, and a lot of our newcomer families were there, so they are thriving, but this grant is just really going to assist us with even taking. So they are thriving, but this grant is just really gonna assist us with even taking them even further. So I think it's really to see, you know.
I saw that there was another 1.5 FTEs in the ESL line, so I didn't know if, if there was FTEs also in here.
We're gonna have some staff support for that grant too, yep.
And then you mentioned earlier that you might be touching on SR3, but that was just an overall question I had was, what does the district have on SR3 for the next fiscal year and what are, you know, how, what is gonna happen when that goes away?
Yeah, so what, what we're trying to do, and I think, um, as we're looking at the SR funding, is to pull some of the staffing, um, out of those grants as they start, uh, go away. So you're not, you know, you don't have 10 teachers that were tied to an SRA grant. It's really, um, doing like the one costs. That's why you'll see a lot of the technology in SR3. You'll see, uh, upgrades to security in SR3. So we're, we're anticipating as we're utilizing that, those funds to stay away as much as we can from staffing and support. Because we know eventually, you know, we want to be ready if, you know, if, you know, once that the grant's gone, but if there is, you know, that as Phil would say, a fiscal cliff or a recession. So we just want to make sure we position ourselves in the future. You know, and I've been through this in 2008 when we hit the recession. There was a lot of funding tied to a 240 grant. And once that funding went away in the recession, we were laying off, you know, 10 to 12 people. So we want to make sure we avoid that, uh, in the future.
I think most districts are looking at that now. It, just, you know, putting, putting positions on SR3 that you know that you're not gonna be able to support for the following year.
Correct, correct. Or removing them and trying to incorporate them into the operational budget. Yep, 100%.
Any further questions?
I have a, just a follow-on question to the fees. So, um, and maybe this can be something you explain if you want, but if, other than athletic fees and transportation fees, there are participatory fees, um, you know, one-offs like, well, I mentioned the drama program. And, uh, I think we've all had, those of us who have kids who've gone on field trips, occasionally they're asked to pay a fee. Um, ceramics, I had a random fee. So where do those, how do we, how do you anticipate those? Are those anticipated in the budget? Are they part of the total cost? And then if they're not, you know, if they are, where does, where does those, where do those fees go? Do they go to the specific program that they are supporting and there, is there some kind of revolving fund? And if this is too many questions for tonight, we can, we can address this in the next week.
I'll, I'll address one or two of them.
Okay.
We talk about field trips, that usually goes into student activities.
Okay.
So you don't see that in this budget because that's student activities and that sits over on the side.
Yep.
Your money comes in, money goes out and it flows that way.
Okay.
And again, for example, and I'm most familiar with the middle school because I've been handling the, uh, student activity counts for the last year and a half, much to my chagrin, but anyway, um, for example, if you're a student participating in the fall play or the spring play, yes, they are asked for money and that again goes into student activities, which you don't see anywhere in here. Because, you know, that, I'm not sure how they come up with the numbers that they need. You know, they're run by the staff members in terms of what they think they need. And as we all know, the cost for field trips can change from year to year. In the middle school, they have their, eighth graders have their big trip, um, that's now back on that they haven't been able to last couple of years, so. And I know that, um, um, Nick tries very hard to make sure that there's money available for those who can't afford it and things like that. So, um, that's how, as best I can explain how some of those things work, but you don't see those things in the budget.
Okay, and maybe going forward, we can think about how to show those in the budget? You know, I think sort of along the lines of Memmer Menon's thoughts is, if we're assuming we're gonna be providing these things every year, you know, if we're gonna have a play in the fall and the spring and we're gonna have, um, other events, um, it would be nice to actually have an understanding of how much that costs, estimated cost and what, you know, we're asking again, the participants to fund.
I'll step on the superintendent's toes on this one, but I think we've at least taken that one small step this year in terms of, of PBE. In terms of no longer having to ask the parents to pay for that. We've not got that in our budget.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a bigger conversation, um, I think about, you know, our school philosophy too. Cause I, I think some of those programs, uh, are vital and, and important, but you know, as the state will see those as, um, you know, like a privilege. So you don't have to, I mean, we wouldn't do it here in Newburyport, but you don't have to fund plays, you don't have to fund athletics, uh, by, you know, the state. You have to fund education, you have to fund math classes. So that's where, you know, those priorities. But I do believe there are some essential outside activities that we feel, you know, are part of the curriculum. Um, and I think that would be a good, I think a good place to start saying, you know, the fall plays are really important to us. Let's see what we can do, um, and then start, you know, creating that list.
Yeah, and particularly, I mean, in the high school, they get credit for participating. So if they're, if we're gonna allow them to accept credit, I think we should, that's a starting point.
Yeah, no, I agree. Alright.
Just a comment?
Yes.
This is my, my fourth budget. And I have to say that the degree of coherence of this budget is, is a dramatic improvement from what it has been in years past. Um, I know you guys have been working very hard and each year it gets better, but this was like a giant leap in terms of understanding how, you know, where the money is and how it's allocated. And we have some questions, but not like we've had in the past in terms of our understanding of the budget. So it just continued, you guys are doing a great job in terms of putting together a budget that we can understand and the community can understand.
Well, then I've been failing because, you know, it's supposed to be a long standard.
Oh, man. Don't do it to your supervisor about that.
I'll tell you, I think it's, you know, this is my fifth budget. But I think every year, I mean, the questions that I received from Ms. Walker and other school committee members assist us with creating, you know, the messaging. So I, I think it's a team effort from school committee to myself to our team. Really just telling the story of, you know, what we're trying to do, uh, with the funds. But I appreciate everyone's input.
I, I guess I'll just say I want to thank you for all your hard work, um, especially from the aspirational budget size where, where we've gotten to now. I'd still like to see this come down a little bit. Um, you know, uh, you know, to speak to what Brianna broke up, uh, mentioned a little bit about the SR3, it'd really be nice to see a breakdown about how some of these grants are being spent. Um, you know, I look at this and, you know, it's only 5.3 city, but 7.1 overall, and I'm wondering what's gonna happen when all those grants go away, so. So I just think that's something we have to continuously be looking down the road. Um, you know, you talked about transportation going way up next year too. So, I mean, I don't want a big tsunami to come next year. Um, and, and I look at, you know, over $300,000 worth of new positions. I would love to do that on the city side if I could, but I know I can't. So I just, I, I think we just have to really be thoughtful over the next couple of weeks to decide what, you know, what's, what's, what's the end result? And what, where are we gonna get our best bang for our buck? But I do think it would be helpful to see how these ESRs have broken down over the last two years and what exactly have they paid for? And any other kind of one-time grants that we don't know if they're gonna come up again, like the Afghan. That was a good, good catch there. But yeah, no, I appreciate all the hard work. It's, and I know it's not easy.
So at this point, we have public comment as it pertains to the budget. We'll have a second round of public comment for items on the business meeting agenda in just a few moments. So do we have anyone present for public comment on the budget? Okay, I think we can get a motion to adjourn from the.
So, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, I'd like to call the business meeting to order.
We don't need to take a roll. It doesn't look like, just called, it says call to order. Should we take a roll again? Okay. Ms. Yell, you take the roll, please?
Make sure we're all still here.
I'm still here.
Yes, I'm here.
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 Present.
Here.
Thank you for indulging us. Um, so now we have public comment as it relates to items on our business meeting agenda. Do we have anyone here this evening for that? No, yes, excellent. I was expecting one person to be here, so glad you're here. Yeah, if you don't mind stepping up to that mic and then if you can just give us, um, your name and address for our minutes and you'll have two minutes for your comment.
Great. Martin Dash, Three Nights Lane, Newburyport. I am, uh, I'm on the Pioneer League Board, volunteer there. We coordinate all of the baseball and softball in town up through seventh and eighth grade. Yeah, so my comments around, are around the, uh, request to waive weekend field use hours, specifically around Eaton. I am not, there'll be full disclosure, I don't know all the details of what the rule is currently. But my understanding is it's somewhere around 12:00 PM is when you can start using Eaton on Sundays. And all the other towns are somewhere in the ballpark of 8:00 AM on Sundays. The reason I'm here to, my support, put my support by waiving that use hour or moving it closer to 8:00 AM is, baseball's growing in town. I'm, I don't think it's necessarily because of us recruiting better. I think it's more because we're getting a larger kid population coming through. We have 10 T-ball teams this year and I think we've gone from like barely being able to field two Babe Ruth teams to six this year. So that with JV teams, basically the whole field, the whole, whole weekday schedule is flat out baseball all the time. So weekend is the only time we can practice and hold some overflow games. So every minute counts basically. So I'm asking for, uh, your support in waiving this, uh, field use hour on Eaton. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and if you wouldn't mind sticking around, we're gonna get to your item. So, I mean, you can have a seat.
Okay, great. I'm gonna stick around.
But sit tight, just in case there's questions. Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Do we have warrants this evening?
We do.
We do. Alright, go ahead.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate 271,656.85 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no complaints.
Second.
All in paper?
Aye.
Great. Um, we have one set of minutes to approve. It's from the March 20th meeting, our last meeting. Uh, any corrections? Nicely done, Ms. Yell. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain if I wasn't here.
Okay, so now we can get right on to that, um, re- request, um, to waive the rules. I, hopefully everyone had a chance to take a look at that in the packet. Our policy states, uh, field use only can begin at 1:00 PM on, um, on Sundays, but there's also provision in there that we can waive that rule. So that.
If I take this?
Do you want to make the motion?
Could I? Well, I can add to the background.
Go ahead, give a little context and then if you can make the motion, that'd be great.
Uh, I received a call from a resident who, um, introduced me to Tim DeGraves. Is that right?
Yep.
And, uh, Mr. Dash here, uh, basically what Mr. Dash said, um, when Babe Ruth got expanded, there's basically no field time. Everybody understands how that works. I was under the impression that many years ago, when I, uh, you guys will laugh, when I got the skate park to be able to be opened on Sundays before 1:00 in the afternoon from the former superintendent, that this rule actually had been changed. I was surprised it was actually still in our policy book. Uh, I definitely don't agree with it and we didn't have time to go through policy and change that or, or whatever it is. So we looked at them and said, hey, we can actually waive this timeframe. And then, uh, you know, we don't like to talk about our own kids, but I have to. So my daughter plays lacrosse and her first game was on Sunday. And I'm getting ready and I figure, hey, what's happening? This game's at 10 o'clock on a Sunday at the high school. And it's Newburyport youth lacrosse, so, you know, out of district teams. And then there was a second game directly after that at 10 minutes to 11. And as I'm walking out, there's a bunch of girls getting ready for their softball game that's about to happen at the high school, all well before 1:00 in the afternoon. So we have two issues. We have an antiquated rule and one that allows no time, especially in, talking about baseball, which takes forever, right, four-hour window there. And the fact that the rule isn't being applied unilaterally because some teams are allowed to use fields on Sundays way before 1:00 and some are told that their application's rejected because our rules state that they can't do it. So there are multiple issues. Uh, and then having said all that, my motion is to waive that rule, uh, specifically so that we can look at it in policy whenever your next meeting is, to change it permanently, but in, for the short terms that the Pioneer can have their, uh, how many dates are here, Mr. Dash? Of six in this application?
I noticed your first date was yesterday. Is that correct?
Sure, right. We moved it later, but yeah. It's much every Sunday through the end of the school year.
Got it.
So I guess my motion is that we waive the rule of the Sunday time restrictions and that we allow the teams to play the same hours that Saturdays are allowed, which is 9:00 AM to 7:00. That's the motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just say, I was gonna make an amendment to say do 9:00 AM, um, but.
Well, 9:00 AM is a Saturday.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was gonna say 9:00 AM for, for Sunday. I don't know what it was for Saturday, but that makes sense.
It says, uh, 9:00 AM for Saturdays and holidays. So I think being consistent with that.
Yep.
And, you know, and I'm, I'm glad we're going to the vote. Um, you know, the city ordinance for putting a jackhammer to your sidewalk on Sundays is 8:00 AM. So having a bunch of kids playing, you know, and I know a neighbor who lives right by the baseball field on Summit. The only concern for them was that that parking's pretty hairy, especially on the corner. So maybe the city can get involved in better signage on the Summit.
Or tow cars, sure.
Well, I don't care if you tell them, but say you can't park on this thing. It's, it's, the corner, I guess, is the problem, not the street, pardon the street.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, I live there near the Cherry Hill soccer field and there is signage to make sure that there isn't too much parking there, so, yep. Mr. Menon?
It, it was interesting listening to Mr. Callahan and it occurred to me.
Really?
Yes, yeah. It occurred to me, do, do travel teams, I can't recall a travel team entity ever asking us to waive rules or do anything like that. Towns come, teams coming from out of town that are part, that were part of a system of?
Well, lacrosse has been playing at the high school on Sundays for many years, from what I've been told. So I don't know if.
So the travel teams are coming from other places, but the Newburyport has a team that's part of that. That's what it's set up. And, and they would reserve field time at all the, all the fields.
And they pay for it.
Right.
Mr. Cole?
Yeah, I just have a few questions for you, Mr. Dash. Uh, and I'll preface them by saying.
If you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic just so we can capture.
I will, I will preface them by saying that, uh, I was part of the committee several years ago when we, this became an issue largely with people that live in the Johnson Street area about, uh, you know, noise and commotion on, on Sundays. So they very diplomatically reached out to us and, uh, you know, we established the 1:00 PM time on Sundays. But I just had some questions about Pioneer League, cause I'm, you know, having, actually years ago, as a kid, I played in Pioneer League, one of the, uh, charter teams. But, uh, today I know it's expanded a great deal. So I guess my first question is what the affiliation is with the Inertown Babe Ruth group? Because that isn't, you said KDA 8 for your grades.
Inertown Babe Ruth is, uh, yeah, seventh and eighth.
KDA is seventh and eighth?
Yep.
Okay.
We used to be part of Inertown Baseball League, which is from second through sixth grade.
Okay.
We have enough participation now that we can do all of our baseball with in-town teams. So all at the Pioneer Park, Woodman Park and Perkins. But in, once you get to seventh and eighth grade, we, we do have, um, out-of-town teams coming in.
Okay, alright, yeah, I know.
Sorry, and also softball is, is, I think it's called like North Shore, Northern Essex Softball League that we participate in.
There's like three levels of the girls' softball, correct?
Yeah.
So, uh, I mean, have you, has there been any surveying or talk with any of the abutters or neighbors about the earlier start?
I have personally not done that, no.
Okay, cause I mean, I just anticipate from the last time this came up, there was some response. There was some pushback.
Sure.
Requesting that, you know, you know, people want their Sundays. Uh, there's also.
Johnson, is that the one?
Johnson is the one that runs to the, uh, east. Johnson is the one that runs to the east of the middle school.
It's like where the tennis courts are, so like, the baseball shouldn't, shouldn't really affect them, but yeah.
Super close to there, yeah.
So if, so if you're, you know, so, I mean, that, that's just my, again, experience concern that I think people that live in the area, you know, should be consulted. I personally would just, I feel uncomfortable just voting to approve the waiver, if we haven't talked with people that live in, in the area. But, and I know Pioneer League has expanded. I appreciate you telling me, 'cause I always thought Babe Ruth was a little older than that, but I guess I'm wrong. So that's, you know, I think that's all I have.
I understand. I guess, I always thought of it as like the immediate butters on, I think it's Summit, that come down there, would be the most affected. And then they have, but they have the varsity field and the football field, like on the other side of the street, and those have no restriction on it. So that's why I think...
It is. Technically, it's every single field. But that was part of my point, is that we're already waiving this by default, because all these leagues have been playing at the high school on Sundays, and they have the people on toppings and what's the back neighborhood? There's the, so the houses that are six feet from the...
Summer.
Summer, yeah.
We, we've already waived it by default, because the athletic department in the district are allowing teams to play. We don't know that as a board, but it's already happening. So I, I just, yeah.
So maybe like a temporary solution.
No, I don't want it...
For now, and then if you have to do something else to make an official rule.
Well, that would be in our policy book.
Invite the butters to comment at that point. I don't know.
Sure. That would be, that would be part of our policy, subcommittee, looking at the policy itself and changing whatever it says, potentially.
The Siggin's, did you wanna say something?
I, I was actually going to echo what you, what you said, but you already said it, which was just that I, I personally would agree to approve the waiver for now, and if we were gonna make a long-term policy change, that, you know, we put that out to the community to ask for their, for their input before we change it long-term.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with that as well. I think waiving it is, I don't know if that is, makes any difference to you, Mr. Cole, as sort of a trial? Just on kind of a trial basis, and then I think maybe we don't rush to change the policy and just see how it goes?
Yeah. I just think there's, there's some things being left out of this conversation, such as like what families do on Sundays. And I think if you're gonna turn Sunday morning into eight AM baseball, I don't think all families can do that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cole, we already do that. There were three lacrosse games in a row and a softball game yesterday.
I'm just pointing out at this point to talk about it. You know, maybe, you know, we, we need to rethink it, and maybe, maybe it happens in a policy subcommittee meeting.
Sure. Absolutely. But, or maybe we have to say to the athletic department, hey, why are you allowing certain teams to have been playing for ages? And now it's suddenly an issue?
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask? So I'm reading the policy, and I don't see where we have the ability to waive.
It's in the rules near the Saturday.
No, it's not. It says, "No organized activity will begin on any athletic field prior to nine AM on Saturday or holidays." There's no reference in that line to Sundays, and then it says, "These restrictions may be waived by action of the school committee."
I'm taking it to mean the restrictions above.
And I understand that's how you're interpreting it, and honestly, I don't have a huge issue with waiving it, but I do find that it's a little bit problematic. On one hand, we give the ability of the superintendent to waive certain things, and then we specifically call out Saturdays and holidays to be waived by the school committee, but we don't say anything about having the ability for the school committee to waive things on Sundays.
Sunday is noted in the policy.
It's noted in the policy, but we don't say anything about waiving that. That's how I'm reading it. So I...
The Sunday hours is one to five, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, no, no, I, I understand. I've read the policy. I'm saying that I don't think, I don't see that there's anything in here that says the school committee may waive the Sunday provision. If you guys are reading it differently, that's fine, but that's not how I see it. I also would vote to waive this, though, if that's the general sort of desire. But I do find it a little bit problematic that we are sort of waiving it for this particular group and didn't have any role to play in the other decisions. So I do feel like this, this discussion should also involve the athletic director and whoever's in charge of approving, you know, where, where sports play and how they're, and, and I'm not, I personally don't necessarily wanna have this conversation at the policy committee right now. We're going through a very methodical review of our policies. So if there's a way, we can do something in the interim, and then when we get to this policy in our methodical review of the policies, we can certainly have a bigger discussion. But I, I think there's probably a lot of history here. I, I remember this discussion. I'm not, I haven't lived here that long, but I do remember this discussion around setting field times, and I think there were a lot of reasons for that. But it does, it is problematic to me that on one hand, we're requiring somebody to come in front of us and ask for a waiver, and on the other hand, certain teams are allowed to practice every, all the time. So, so again, my, I think ultimately I'm supportive of a waiver. I don't see in our policy that we actually have the power to grant that waiver. I'm not gonna split hairs on this one. I just, I think it, I think it merits a larger discussion, you know, to understand why the, I think the athletic director needs to be aware of this fact, and maybe there's more of a story there, you know? Maybe there's a history here that we aren't completely aware of on that end, but, you know, I think the Pioneer League meets the requirements of what we would typically allow to be happening on a school facility. But I think there are, you know, to Mr. Cole's point, school facilities aren't just like any other public facility. They do, there are reasons we put restrictions on them, and I think it's, it's respectful to consider why those restrictions were placed in the first place, rather than just throwing it out and redoing the whole thing.
Mr. Menon?
My recollection is that we have waived this in the past more than once, and I, I don't recall pitchforks and torches here from the neighbors that public comment about it.
Yeah.
I think the times we've waived it, I, I don't recall issues being raised specifically to it. So, you know, again, I, I understand. I, I understand why that it's there. I, I do read it, that there's nothing that prohibits us from waiving it as well. So, you know, I, I, I feel comfortable that, that the school committee can do that. I think we have to figure out why other groups have not made presentations to us to ask us to do waivers. That's, but that's...
That's a separate question.
That's a separate issue. But I, I, I like the idea of voting on a waiver with some amended hours specific, and, and then putting it on the policy priority when we get to F, and since we've done A, B, and C, we're not that far away from it.
Not that far.
So it's something that could be reviewed within the next couple of months. So I, I'm, I would support that, but I would, I would, I would offer an amendment to the hours that were suggested by Mr. Callahan, the mayor. It was nine to, nine to seven on Sunday.
Just point of clarification, Mr. Dash. I'm looking at the application. It looks like you have a start time of 10 for the listed Sundays here.
That was the original request.
Yeah. And, and that's what, that's what you would like, is 10?
That would be the game start, so I guess in theory we would be there early.
Yeah. I would say nine works, 'cause it gives you some time to, like, warm up and...
Nine. Okay, so we're not talking about eight, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Families, kids would be showing up around nine. Okay, which is consistent with the policies for Saturdays and, and holidays. So Superintendent, did you wanna?
I just, I checked in regarding this. So the high school sports, they're not practicing on those Sundays, so this is, would be more for the, you know, the rec league and, and the city, so.
Whether or not the high school teams are practicing or not has nothing to do with teams being using, allowed to use the field.
Well, I'm saying...
No, but if high school, they'd get priority. If high school, high school always has priority.
Saturday morning book for high school.
No, I, no, I get it. But none of that has to do with the fact that the high school field is being used by out-of-district teams currently. Just wanna make sure everybody understands why I said that. Okay.
Okay. Any other points or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have a couple brief subcommittee updates. Mr. Callahan?
We haven't met, but we're gonna meet next Thursday.
Great, thank you. And policy, Ms. Walker?
I, I don't have any updates, and we may not meet this month, 'cause we are meeting next month with the M.A.S.C.
Great. Superintendent's report.
All right. It's a long one.
All right, all right.
Well, we covered grants, so we can take that off. We did that as part of the budget process. I just have a, just a few updates. I'll start off with the IFTAR that we hosted at the high school. It was a wonderful event. Human Rights Commission, I can't say enough about it, and I think it's grown every year, to the point, last year was held here, and we utilized the high school cafeteria. It was just a wonderful community event. Obviously, our people were instrumental. Lisa Furlong back there, Pam Keely, the custodian crew, and I, I just can't say enough. I think when we talk about, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and people need visuals on what does that mean, go to the IFTAR, 'cause that's what it's all about. You had people, different religions, different backgrounds. It was just a, it motivated me. Every time I go to that, it motivates me.
I loved it.
Yeah. It was, you know, there was some school community members there, too. So I just really wanna put a shout out to the Human Rights Commission and all of the work, and a great partnership. And the mayor had a great opening speech, so, good job.
Thanks.
All right. School choice, we, we opened up those seats, and we already, I think Newburyport's the place to be. So for grade one, we've had, we've opened up 65 seats, and we have 18 applicants. We had two for grade one, four for grade six, two for grade seven, and 10 for grade nine. School choice, and that's only been about a week or so with those openings, so we're excited about that. And this is...
Superintendent, can I just ask, is that a first-come, first-served process?
Yes. It's first-come, first-served, but if, as we keep it open, if it goes over the allotment, then that's when we go into a lottery.
Right, but only for the people over that, that amount, or?
No, it would be...
No, you'd have to take everybody.
Everybody, got it. Okay.
So it would be, that's, we had to do that last year for one of the grades. We had to do a lottery. So whenever that deadline is to end.
Yeah, got it.
In another year, we went over by like two, and I think we ended up taking both students. So it just depends on what the bandwidth is.
And if things, if, you know, the, the other piece, if, if numbers change and we can open up more slots, then I will come back to the school committee, request that.
Can I ask a question about kindergarten? There was a discussion about kindergarten paying tuition for city or, or district employees. Are you still looking into that, or where does that stand?
We are looking into that. I think the, the challenge is that there's not many other districts or any other districts that I know of that, that do that, because the difference is the tuition, you'd have to pay almost like every year. So, because, let's say you did that one-time payment, but those per people costs are every year. So even if you look at school choice, and it's only $5,000, but that $5,000 is every year, and if a student has a disability, then that would tie to our circuit breaker. So reimbursement through school choice. If it's just tuition and a student, let's say, needed support services down the road, you wouldn't be able to tie that into your circuit breaker, 'cause it's not, it wouldn't be part of the school choice program.
Can you, can there be, can you offer a placement for one year, as in you're offering a placement for just kindergarten, then they would have to enter school choice if it was available for grade one?
So for, for example, for our exchange program, we do one year. So students, their junior or senior year can choice in, they pay the per people, not choice in, they come in, they pay the full tuition, but they're only here for one year, and it's through that exchange program. So we can be very selective at that point. But these are some of the questions as we are investigating that we're looking at. So we're still working on it, but we haven't seen any other districts, other than, as you said, maybe a one-year tuition payment for the year.
I mean, I guess it, it's, it's a risk, right, for families to say, I'm gonna tuition in for kindergarten only, knowing I'll have to enter school choice in grade one if it's available, and then they'd have to, you know, move their child out. But it could be, you know, an innovative perk for employees of the district and the city.
So I guess it's to be continued, but we are definitely looking in. Those are some of the, I guess, roadblocks as we started to say, yeah. And then I just, I could probably just send this out to everybody. I have like MCAS dates, but I can read them off to you.
Bruce is gonna put it in his calendar.
Yeah. I didn't, are you proctoring one of the tests?
I hope not. All right.
Of all the things, of all the things I've been saying for five years.
Bruce was like, what?
An MCAS date goes in the book.
Yeah, I, I just wanna monitor the anxiety level of the student body here. I just wanna know.
All right. You ready? Brezner Hand, grade three ELA is April 4th and April 5th, which is today. NRC ELA is the same, April 4th, April 5th. Molen ELA, grades four, five, is April 10th and 11th. NRC eighth grade science is May 8th. Brezner Hand, grade three math is May 9th and May 10th. NRC grade six to eight math is May 10th and 11th. Molen, grade four, five math is May 16th and 17th. High school grade 10 math is May 16th and 17th. Molen, grade five science is May 23rd, and NHS biology is June 6th through 7th. And the high school ELA occurred in March, so it was beginning of March. So those are the MCAS dates.
I got them. Got it written down right here.
All right.
Make a shirt for Bruce.
Tour.
Tour. The MCAS tour.
All right.
Does that cover it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
That's the Superintendent's report.
Any new business?
Yes, did you ask me? Sorry.
Just stretching.
I actually just wanted to share a comment. We, Member Higgins, at our, when we talked about transportation policy change, we had brought up, brought up the idea of changing our, how we gauge need by using the low-income threshold set by the state versus the free and reduced lunch for people who would not have to pay a fee. And Pam Keely was great to do some extra research, and we had a meeting with her, and we determined that right now, the free and reduced lunch actually gives us the most, captures the most kids, which nobody could really understand, but Pam had some theories. So I, I really appreciate that Member Higgins raised it, and I also appreciate the staff doing the extra work, and, you know, Pam Keely did some great research into that and is, is gonna continue to track it. And I think what we'll probably do is when we get to the policy part, again, revisit, revisit that particular policy, we'll probably have a suggestion about making it flexible, so that we could use either the free and reduced lunch threshold or the low-income threshold, so. 'Cause I think the objective, at least for, for us and for the staff, is to try to make sure we're capturing the people who need, need that, that relief. So I really appreciate that discussion, and just wanted to share the kudos.
Great, thank you. I have a couple items. Just a reminder to everyone, our next meeting is on Tuesday, April 25th, because of the school vacation week, and that will be again at the NHS library. And the other thing is, at that meeting, we'll have a draft schedule of our, our meetings for the coming year. So just a heads up that that's coming. That'll be in the packet for us to approve. It's, you know, pretty standard with the first and third Monday moving to Tuesday as, as needed with holidays and such. One thing to, to look at, just if you wanna check your own calendars, rather than having the summer retreat in, in July, we talked about doing it on Monday, August 7th, like in lieu of having a business meeting that night, and proposed hours of four to eight. So just a heads up, if that, if that's a concern to anyone, you can reach out to me and, you know, hoping to get that... you know, um, hoping to get that, um, meeting, um, schedule approved at the next, at our next meeting. Any questions about that, or?
I just had a question about schedule in general. Um, is, our next meeting is the final, would be the final approval of the budget, or final vote on the budget. Um, it seemed like there was a lot of sort of outstanding items tonight that staff was gonna correct and adjust, and I just wanted to make sure that if we had any additional questions, do we have any flexibility on carrying that forward to another meeting? Um, or would it be better to consider some kind of work session in the interim to make sure that we don't delay that process? Um, I was gonna bring this up in the public hearing, but I thought it'd be better to bring it up in front of the whole, at the part of our business meeting, 'cause, I mean, we're on a timeframe to get the budget to the city council by a certain time, right?
Budget leaves here and goes to the mayor, who has ten days, I believe, right, before you send to the city council?
Right, so that.
So we've backed the schedule in from that, so.
Right.
City council has to act on it by June thirtieth, so, you know, May fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, 'cause there's, it seemed like, I mean, I think that, I, I appreciate the presentation, and it just seemed like there was still some outstanding items and questions, and I just wondered, if there's any, any buffer in there, if there's just like one more thing we wanted to see before we sort of gave it our final.
Well, it's gonna be on the FinCom subcommittee next week, if you have questions you wanna send in before we have that meeting, it'll be on that agenda.
What do you think Superintendent, would that be a good time? I know you also said to just reach out to you with any questions, but if you wanna have more of a formal work session or time.
Yeah, I mean, all my questions have been asked. I think I'm more thinking about, you know, if, if the information gets presented back to us and we have additional questions, are we gonna have that buffer, 'cause it's basically, we're getting that information that night, and then we're, we're voting on it, you know, that's all.
Our first meeting in May is that Monday, Monday, May one.
May first, yeah.
So I would have to, I mean, the idea is I need to submit that budget, I think, May second, so it's in the first meeting.
Doesn't really allow us.
Yeah, so I mean, I would say, I would say if we're gonna come up with something, it would have to be, I would say it have to be in April, if they wanted, if you wanted to do something.
Right, so maybe we would have some kind of a working session in the interim, so we can stick to that schedule.
Or, yeah, or you release earlier, and it's just, it's posted, and it's, it's attached to an agenda, and we can all access that before that.
Yeah, if you're, if you, you know, I guess I defer to, you know, and I, maybe this isn't necessarily something I had to decide tonight, but if you think you need more time to, to make sure you, you heard us and we get the, you know, give you the input you need, it might be worth thinking about doing like an interim working session.
I, my, maybe the recommendation could be is if there's more questions that come in, right, after tonight. Um, we have the, um, April twenty-fifth meeting. Hopefully, I'd say I answer those, but if people need another revision or need some more information, you could also host a, um, a special meeting maybe for that Thursday. So if we're not, if they're, aren't ready, I mean, I, I'm gonna hope that we can, um, answer all the questions and create, um, the budget book that, you know, answers all that on the twenty-fifth. But I would say if there was, um, a discussion on the twenty-fifth and we needed to go back, we could set up a special meeting on the.
Just a couple days later.
Yeah, and just, and just focus, I mean, it's.
That meeting would have to be posted forty-eight hours in advance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you would have to be posting that meeting.
I think we would know, I think we would, it would be my guess, we would maybe have a sense, once the, I don't know. Once you provide us, we're, we're gonna get the materials from you on the twentieth or the twenty-first, right?
Mm-hmm, the vacation week.
Well, I defer to you guys on what you think, but.
I mean, if that works for the mayor.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the public meeting schedule for that.
I mean, you, we could schedule, uh, you could schedule a special meeting.
I think you, I think you'd probably tentatively schedule it right now, and so we just kinda hold it.
A placeholder.
If you need it.
Budget conversation.
That sounds like it.
I would do it like that.
And then the, you could even put out the agenda that week and put a special meeting as a follow-up of the, you know, and if you don't need it, then you can cancel it. That way you have something built in.
Yeah, I would, I would do that.
I, I feel like that gives us a buffer, if, if there's just something comes up and we just don't, aren't ready to resolve it, you know, I don't, I'm not anticipating that, but I did, it just seems like we're, you know, there's, there was a lot of things that you guys were gonna fine-tune, and so, I think I'd feel comfortable if we had that buffer.
Great. I also think Mr. Callahan, FinCom next week could be in the interim, an opportunity?
Yeah, everybody's welcome.
Come and.
You can zoom in?
Okay, maybe I can.
Well, and then I, I think it's been beneficial for members to send me questions ahead of time, too. And then I can address it in the budget book, make it clear, so.
Great. Um, any other new business? Get a motion to adjourn?
It's a move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.